Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Monday, September 24th, 2018. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the City Hall Council Chambers. Enroll call, Patty.
Cypher.
President.
Hawkins.
Present.
Hasek.
Here.
Peters. Zarley.
Here.
It's been determined that we have a quorum and we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is to approve tonight's agenda as presented in your packet. Is there please a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Cypher and second by Hawkins.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Did I say aye? I stumbled out of my mouth, sorry.
That's okay. All opposed? Motion carried. First item is 6.1 minutes of our last meeting, which were September 10th, and they were included in your packet. Is there please a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion offered by Zarley.
Second.
And second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next item is 8.1 and it's to proclaim October 15th, 2018, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day, and I have a proclamation that I'd like to read, please. Whereas infants remembered in Silence Incorporated and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy through early childhood. And whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die in, or bury a child in our community. And whereas infants remembered in Silence, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization was founded in 1987, 31 years ago, to support parents whose child or children have died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillborn, neonatal death, sudden unexplained death of a child, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents, and all other types of infants and early childhood death. And whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October 15th with a candle lighting at 7:00 PM. Some will remember their children or child in their homes while others will remember them in small group gatherings around the state, across the nation and around the world, unifying these parents in tribute of their children. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Now therefore, in honor of the thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, I, Deborah J. Foster, Mayor of the City of Fairmont, do hereby proclaim October 15th, 2018, to be Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the City of Fairmont. Thank you. 13.1, Event Permit to Block Street for Auction. And Mike.
Steve Faust Auctioneers and Clark Auctionist Service would like to block off a portion of Day Streets from Albion Avenue to Redwood Drive for an auction on Saturday, October 20th, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I would let the residents in that area know that they are looking for an indoor venue and if they can't then they'll do it here. But staff does recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion please to allow Day Street to be blocked off from Albion Avenue to Redwood Drive for an auction on Saturday, October 20th, 2018, from 6:00 AM until approximately 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hasek.
Second.
And second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion?
Any issues with access to the water plant or anything with that?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. 15.1, Commercial Building Demolition Assistance. And Mike.
The City of Fairmont has set aside $75,000 each year to use in blighted property removal. Part of that goes to a grant fund to help private owners tear down properties. This happens to be the Old Banyi Restaurant owned by Unki Inc. at 500 Lake Avenue. The building's been an eyesore for several years. Unki Inc. is requesting council assistance in the demolition of, and our grant program is 50% of the cost up to, in this case, it would be $10,000 because it's a commercial property, but in this case 50% is $4,341. The total estimated cost is 86, 820. That building is unsightly. The Marina Lodge is looking for additional parking and this will help out with that. So staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion please to approve demolition assistance at 50% of the actual cost, $4,341?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins and second by Hasek. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. 15.2, Mendat Hangar and Taxi Lane Construction Design Only Grant Agreement. And Troy.
Evening Mayor Counsel. As part of the hangar improvement project over at the airport, this is a grant agreement from Mendat that the past council meeting approved. Grant agreement from the FAA, so this is a portion of that. Mendat grant agreement for $6,371. Council's asking to, or asking the council to approve this grant agreement and the resolution associated with it. The Airport Advisory Board is recommending approval as well.
Okay, thank you Troy. Is there a motion please to approve Resolution 2018-29 and authorize the mayor to sign Mendat Grant Agreement Number 1032092 for hangar and taxi lane construction phase one design only?
So moved.
Motion offered by Cypher.
Second.
And second by Zarley. Is there any further discussion? It's a roll call vote, please Patty. Hawkins?
Yes.
Zarley?
Yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
Hasek?
Yes.
Resolution passed. 15.4, Community Center Committee. And Mike, we'll start with you.
The Community Center Committee's...
Oh, did I forget my three? Oh, I'm sorry.
Grab two, didn't you?
That I did, I'm sorry. Thank you everybody. We missed 15.3. Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program for the Fairmont Municipal Airport. Troy, sorry Troy.
Thank you. In additional airport business, city's required to approve a disadvantaged business enterprise program for the airport. Since the city receives federal funding, we're required to maintain a program which allows the opportunity for disadvantaged businesses to bid on state-funded contracts. So this program was reviewed or developed by our consultant and reviewed by the Airport Advisory Board. Staff's recommending approval.
Okay. Is there a motion please to approve the DBE program for the municipal airport and authorize the mayor to sign the policy statement?
So moved.
Motion offered by Cypher.
Second.
And second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next one is 15.4, Community Center Committee. Mike.
Members of the Community Center Committee would like to give us a summary of the Community Center business plan tonight. So with that, who's ever going to lead off?
Good evening Mayor Counsel and staff. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. First of all, as I'm looking at the agenda, I also see that Kids Just Want to Have Fun is here to present about their mini golf and members from the Adventure Playground for the All Inclusive Playground are here. This is fantastic. I mean, what a great evening to be a resident of Fairmont. So, thank you very much for listening to these. These are all great projects. Tonight, I'm just going to give a brief history and then currently I am a co-chair along with Brandon Edmondson on the Community Center Action Committee and along with Amy Long, who is a community member, is just going to give you some highlights.
Tell people who you are.
Oh, I'm Steve Hawkins, thank you.
There you go. You're welcome.
All right, and so, and then if, as we present, feel free to answer questions or towards the end when we're done, we'll have it open for any questions, results of last week's information, plus anything else that we present tonight. So just briefly, I want to give just a brief history. A few years ago, apparently there was a group of government agencies, county, city, chamber, school district that had gotten together trying to work on a community center. And it was about three, four years ago, one of those members approached me and said, hey, you know, you just got done with this committee, you guys should bring a community center forward. I'm like, all right, really? How are we going to do that? But we got to think about it. We were thinking about it and we were like, you know, does this community in the area even want a community center? I mean, there's a group working on it, but do we even know? And working with the City of Austin, we created a, 1590 was created, as a way to ask the community, what is it that you would like to see? The area residents, what would you like to see? Not necessarily a community center. So we did what we called the idea collection process, which began, so after 1590 was formed, we began that process and we had one simple question, which was, what would you like to see in our community or surrounding area to enhance what we have here today? That was it. Anything was available, you could say anything, there was somebody that put NASCAR racetrack, which I thought would be really cool, because I don't think there is one in Minnesota. So everything was on the table. So in doing that, what was very interesting is, is we were getting ideas, just basic ideas, and the whole process was dominated by community center. Indoor swimming pool, community center, youth center, you know, roller skating, something for kids to do, senior center. And it was really interesting just to see with just not a yes/no question, should we have a sales tax on it, it was, what would you like to see? And the results were dominated by a community center or related amenities. We followed up with two survey processes that we have, and both of those survey processes, the community center was by far the most requested and voted on component in our survey process. So with that, we had our big reveal in May of 2015, and after that, we got, we got subcommittees to work on the different groups and we started out, we created a subcommittee for the community center. And this group consisted of community, 1590 members, and I think Paul Hoy was there at the time, and we kind of looked at each other like, what do we do? We've never built one of these things, it's a large project. So, we started out by making some phone calls. I remember calling Kevin Nelson at Purim, Minnesota, just like, what do you have? What do you do? What does it look like? Quickly after that happened, we got involved on a community center association. This is a group of communities in primarily Minnesota, but Northern Iowa, Wisconsin, South Dakota, and it's just a group of community center executives that bounce questions off each other. And so it's just a network. And so we immediately got included in that and it really was a big, big move for our part. It really gave us some direction and to really learn and understand what these are about. So one of the first things we did is we started doing tours. And before we did these tours, we prepared some basic questions, you know, to ask, because we don't know. I mean, like, how much did it cost to build? When'd you build it? Who owns it? How do you operate it? Do you have a deficit? Is it subsidized at all? Things like that. And so we, I was partaking in the tour that consisted of Redwood Falls and New Ulm. And so we headed out there to Redwood Falls that morning, I remember walking in, we met with the administration, met the superintendent of schools, that's, and Redwood Falls are connected, and it was my really first sense. I knew what a community center was, but it was my first sense of understanding what it was. And so, we walked in, met with them, asked some brief questions, and we started the tour. First thing we did was walk into the community room, kind of like the Holiday Inn where they have dividers, and there were a bunch of seniors sitting on chairs, and they had these weights. I'm like, oh, that's cool. You know, so they had the dividers, these seniors were using, having weights. We then walked right into the main corridor down the hallway and there was a number of other senior members of the community sitting there. And that's where we learned that Redwood Falls said, you know, when we started this in 1998, we built our project, we built it too small. We didn't realize that till it was up and running and we had all the people coming in. We're going to spend another 1.2 million here in the next year to build a senior center, which they have now completed. And they said, it's really important that our seniors, we didn't realize that initially, but it was a place for them to go, interact, not only with other seniors, but other youth and adults within the community. We then proceeded down the corridor the other direction to the fieldhouse. And that was my first, like, wow, we need this. And as Jackie was explaining this to us, she goes, here's our fieldhouse, we have a four-lane track, but really what's great about this, we have the gymnastics team down at one end, we have a children's playground in the corner over here, but she said, you know, every other year, we host the state indoor amateur archery competition. Yeah, and our high school hosts a 31-team wrestling tournament every December, which the Martin County West Fairmont Red Bull won last year, I believe. So very large tournament. We also have political conventions here and other activities. And so it's not just a track. And it was really for us, a kind of a sense to really see and work in motion, what they're used for. We also at New Ulm witnessed people playing pickleball in their fieldhouse and tennis and all these great things. So it was our first opportunities, like, ah, I get it, you know, I'm understanding what these do for communities. One of the best parts about that conversation is that we're leaving, she goes, you know, here at Redwood Falls, our community center is connected by a corridor with the high school. And we do that, they're in partnership with us, but she said, you know, one thing that's really great is that after school, there's a, there's a lot of kids come over and hang out, play, play out in that fieldhouse and things like that. She goes, and we do get a lot of kids that are naughty, and they, the staff kind of feels like, oh, I'm babysitting and all, this is kind of annoying. She said, what's funny is to watch our staff, and what they do is they come often and they bring cookies and brownies and treats. Because she said, you know, these kids are the kids that probably aren't going to get a snack at home after school. They might not even get fed. And so even though it's annoying, we know this is a place, a safe place for them to come, hang out, have some fun. And that was really a moment for myself and I'm like, oh, yeah, I get it. This is a community center. This is an event for all people, activities, all different needs, that is important for a thriving community. So, after that, you know, we got some general comments from the community centers, we created a spreadsheet, we didn't visit all these...
Steve, can you tell, how big is Redwood Falls? What's their population?
They're about 5,000, 5,500.
About half, okay, just curious, I couldn't...
So we created a spreadsheet, because we didn't visit all of them, like, we didn't visit Purim and Detroit Lakes and we didn't, so we didn't, well, we visited the ones in the area, but we created a spreadsheet and we essentially were asking questions like, how much did it cost to build? What would you do differently? Things like that. And so, the one common question that everyone had said is that we built it too small, once they got it up. And some of them, like Watertown, like Redwood Falls, Watertown, South Dakota, Redwood Falls, New Ulm, they're all expanding or building new facilities. Austin, the same thing. Because they found that these are such an important component of communities. It was that point then, in the spring of 2060, after collecting all this information, Project 1590 Committee, plus some of the board members, did a presentation right here. It was a work session that we had. And it was at that point that the local option sales tax idea was born. I believe it was Councillor Askland who brought it forward with support from the rest of the councils, like, let's look into that. Let's see what that does, you know, what is that about? So it was at that point that the staff is working hard to get that all lined up, to put it on the ballot for '16. So, you know, 1590 is like, great, here's a source of revenue. Okay, so we worked really hard, we raised over $5,000 from donations from local businesses, we made signs, we went door to door. My wife and I did 10th Street North, did tons of presentations, the Rotary, you know, Early Wireless, Quanus, all sorts of groups, Human Services, and we just informed people. This is what we're looking to do, the city's looking at doing this, this is how it would look. And so it was, you know, we did ads and things like that, and it was, it was really fun, interesting, we got some ideas from the community. But the one thing, once the sales tax vote came in November, was, it was again clear to us, it was yet again confirmed, this community is really looking for something like this. It was, it was 61.19 to 38.81% yes versus no for the local option sales tax. And not only was it citywide, every single ward voted in favor, and not going a little deeper, every single precinct and every single ward in the City of Fairmont voted for the sales tax. Because the people are looking for amenities like this. And I can tell you that with all this work that we spent, I'm so excited and I can't wait for the possibility of this project moving forward. Next, I'm going to have Amy Long step forward and she's going to present some other information based on economic development.
Steve's a little taller than me, so bear with me while I get this down. So yes, as Steve said, my name is Amy Long, and I am here today representing the Fairmont Community Center, but also hopefully representing on a broader perspective, future users, individuals and families of a community center. So I just want to take a few minutes of your time and share my personal experience, really as a newcomer to Fairmont. I was not a part of the history that Steve described and the evolution of how we are here today, but after moving to Fairmont and getting engaged, I wanted to be involved with the Fairmont Community Center Task Force because of the reasons that I find it very important. So, what brought me to Fairmont was my career, as many of you are aware, but what I also brought with me was a family, a young family. I have a husband and three children, and we have raised our family in a total of four communities so far. One of those communities being smaller than Fairmont, two of those communities being similar size to Fairmont, and one of them being much larger. This is the first community that we've lived in that does not offer a community center. A community center is absolutely a community amenity, and I want to emphasize that amenity. However, for families such as my own, having lived in communities with a community center, it quickly meets that need list when you're thinking about where you want to work and live and raise a family. So it's really essentially a community amenity to attract, engage, and retain young families. So I am speaking on my personal experience of having a young family, but that does not mean that a community center would not apply to all ages. As Steve mentioned, it would have a pool, it would have a workout fitness area, a field house for multipurpose space, which really is a versatile community amenity. Just a couple notes on the professional side of my life. In my organization, when we are recruiting candidates or future workforce, we're not only recruiting to the career, we're recruiting to the community. And so we often ask people to fill out a community intake form, we call it, and nearly 100% of the time, people who are evaluating our job opportunities and evaluating our community are asking about a community center. And then they're very surprised to learn when we do not have one. The other professional side of things that I think about is in today's world, people are more willing to commute long distances for work. So it makes it even that much more important to have community amenities that people expect so they are choosing to not only work in our communities, but live here as well. So, thank you for your time today, and I hope that you can see the connections based on my personal experience of what a community center would do for a thriving Fairmont. Thank you.
Thanks Amy.
Thank you.
Brandon?
Thank you. Thanks Brandon. I really wanted to do that. That was going to drive us all crazy for the rest of the day if we didn't do that, so. As they said, my name is Brandon Edmondson, I'm with Kramer, Schaefer and Edmondson here in town. Moved here about five years ago with my wife and our, what is now growing, a young family. We've got a five-year-old and a two-year-old at home. So this project, very near and dear to my heart as well, for a lot of the same reasons that Amy just spoke about. And let me just touch on a few other points, add to what she said, and then I want to get to the business plan that you guys paid for and talk about what we've done with the money you've given us so far. Fairmont is a wonderfully active place in the summer here. We happened to move here in November, which is not the best time to move anywhere in the north, but certainly in Minnesota, I think. In the winter here, there is not a lot of activities outside of ice fishing, you know, snow skiing, all those kinds of things, which, coming from Texas, I have none of the equipment still for. Looking into getting into some of that stuff, but when you have small kids especially, or if you're retired and looking for things to do in the winter, that is lacking in Fairmont. I think we all can agree on that right now. Is something to do indoors in the winter here is lacking. And I think you will see, and we've talked to many people in our, in our circle, they're driving all over the place to go to indoor water, to go to indoor activities all over the state. Driving two, three hours to get to those places, spending their recreation dollars there, eating at their restaurants, staying in their hotels. That's not a small component to what we're looking at here. And I think when you look at the surveys that 1590 conducted, they asked the people at that time, what do you want? And again, overwhelmingly, this is what they chose. We then had the sales tax issue that came on, and you know what? We put that on the ballot and we said, please confirm what these survey results are showing. Does the community support this? Do they support government's public money being spent on an amenity such as this? And again, 60% or 61% passing in anything in today's political environment is a big number. The margin by which that passed is not insignificant here. So we've asked the City of Fairmont, the citizens here in the surrounding area twice, if they want this, and they've said yes. The 1590 community, the 1590 Committee took it from there. They took the ball and did a lot of work in conjunction with the city and others to keep this ball moving. And the, kind of the next step after the sales tax passed was, we decided, there was a community meeting with, I don't know, there was 50 or 60 people there, all excited about the project, all wanting to help out, and we decided at that point, that's too many people to get things done. We need a smaller committee to make this happen and to take the lead and then use those other volunteers as needed along the way. So in doing that, we started with a committee of about 13 people, of lawyers, bankers, insurance folks, healthcare professionals, you name it. We tried to get all parts of the community here and represented. Seniors were represented, the schools represented, Paul Hoy from the city was represented, so we tried to get as many different viewpoints as we could in the room. And it became very clear early on, one, that I think we had the right people in there. These were doers. This was a self-titled action committee, the Fairmont Community Center Action Committee. And I think that's important when you see the way we've gone about our business up to this time. So we, first thing we did was realize that while all of us have our own professions and own things that we do with our time, none of us were community center builders. None of us had done that before and we knew we needed some help. So again, just to put us back in place, what we did was go out and look at owners' reps, owners' representatives who could help lead us through this process. We wanted to hire someone who had done this before, knew what they were doing and could tell us each step of the way, here's what's next, here's what you need to do, to make sure, to find out if a community center would work here, and if so, to make sure we ended up with the right community center for our community. And so we came to this council with a plan to hire that owner's representative and to hire some other professionals to help that, help make that decision, help make that decision with us. You guys very graciously extended money to us in the amount of $125,000 to do this planning phase of the project. To date, we've used your money to hire that owner's rep for Phase 1. We've also hired an architect, a construction manager, to tell us solid costs on what these are going to be. These are likely, although not contractual yet, likely the folks who would build this, when we get to that point. We wanted somebody who would come in and give us hard numbers. Not some, not numbers that somebody else would have to live up to, but numbers that they would have to live up to. And that when they told us what this was going to cost today, we were going to hold them accountable for those numbers when it comes to construction time. So then when we came back to the city, we came back to private donors and asked them for money, we knew where it was going, we knew we had good numbers to work with. And so as through that process, you guys saw all this at the work session last week, we came up with a set of plans. And there are phased-in plans, and Phase 1 is what we're doing right now. Phase 1 is what we are here trying to build right now. That is the project we're seeking to build now, and we've included a lot of other things along the way to try to be as forward-thinking as we possibly can be, again, looking to the future, possible expansions, things like that. So, once the, first thing you need to know when you've got a plan for a community center is where's it going to go? So we considered several different options, and the, the best thing about this was, the professionals that we brought in to help advise us, they were given tours of the town when they came, and all of them, to a person, said that the site by Mayo, that is currently a bean field, I think this year, is the type of site you would look for if you're building a community center. And they told us repeatedly how fortunate we were to have an available site in the middle, kind of the middle of town type thing, that would work and that would fit everything in there. So, first thing we did was talk to Mayo, and Mayo, again, were in talks with them to acquire that site on a number of different terms with them. And I think when you, well, the next thing we did after we acquired the site, again, fantastic site that we had, the next thing we did was figure out how much this is going to cost to build. So we went from there, again, work with the architect... So we went from there, again, work with the architects, to look at a number of different options of things to build. And we started with, if we had an infinite budget, what would we want to build? And took in everyone's things that they would like to see in there. Kind of, you look to see what that starts to build, and then you say, well, do we have other options of a little bit smaller facility that's still worth building? And I think when you look at having a pool, which was a priority here, the field house was a priority, conference center was a priority, we looked at hockey and some other things as well, the pool kind of came to the top, and when the Ballard King, the one that did the operations study came, I think that's what we hear. Indoor water, indoor activities is what are the top of people's priority list. I think what you see when you have a pool, an indoor pool especially, is you have to have the right amenities around it to make the pool make sense, to make sure you have the operations and the income coming in from the other amenities that will get you the desired number of people using your facility to make these things as operationally feasible as they can be. So we started to look at, well, what's the smallest thing that would be worth having that would get the desired amount of amenities and hit the right, hit the right gap there for having the things you need to make it work, but not overdoing it? And when we did that, we came up with what we've called Phase One of our project. Phase One includes the amenities that they talked about earlier, which is the pool with the slide with some zero entry so that kids and seniors and hopefully some with disabilities can access it without stairs, swimming lanes, I think it had three or four swimming lanes in it for those desiring to use the pool for exercise and things of that nature. You can see up on the board now, it's got the field house, and you'll see basketball courts on there, and I've said this a number of times, basketball courts are on the drawing to show size. This is not just adding four basketball courts. That space will be used for a number of different things. It will likely have some basketball hoops in it, will also be used for all the different things, I think Steve mentioned earlier, that you can do in a field house. In addition, I think that size of space has all types of multi-use purposes, from trade shows, you know, boat shows, those kind of things where you need that type of space. If we do this right, those opportunities are out there to bring in that kind of revenue, again, to our hotels, fill up our hotels, fill up our restaurants, anything we can do like that is a bonus for our community and for the businesses and shops here in town who would benefit from the increased visitors. We also heard from a lot of folks that a conference center, another meeting place here, would be useful, and specifically a larger venue that can hold the larger events that right now, we're told from the Chamber and Visitors Bureau and those kind of folks, that we don't have a large enough space to even apply for some of the conventions and some of the conferences that we could otherwise get that would, again, bring more people to our community. So we wanted to have something in there that would support larger events, but could also be broken down into smaller rooms so that you can have breakout rooms and you can have some classroom activities in there and that kind of thing. Just a good public space that, again, people can use to house whatever events they may need. We've also got a dedicated senior center in there, just above the orange area there. Again, another gathering space for our senior center. I understand we have a senior center here in town right now that's not being utilized as much as it could. Hopefully, a place like this that comes with the other amenities can kind of revitalize that community and be a bigger draw for our seniors and get them a place where they can socialize and exercise and do the things that they like to do. Certainly, that's a great group to fill the field house in the middle of the day where others may be at work or school, that kind of thing. So we came up with the project that you see here. Again, this is our Phase One. The construction budget was the first thing we determined, and the construction budget for that is $24.7 million. And again, all of the experts we brought in have said, that's a real number. That's a firm number, that's all in, soft costs, hard costs, everything. That's what it should cost to build that facility. But one of the first things our committee did, I think the very first meeting, was say, building this thing is great, we all want something, operationally, what is this going to look like? And we are, at least half the committee, I think, more focused on that than anything else, which is great. Great to have some balance on the committee where we have folks pushing the project forward, making sure we get what we need, other ones saying, slow down enough to make sure that we do this responsibly. And I think that's when we came to you, what we promised we would do is do this in as a responsible way as we can, and I think that's what we've done. And towards that operational end, we've done a number of different things now to get the best possible information that we can get as to what this will cost to operate, and some of that work with the money you've previously given us is yet to come. But where we are today is, we got a study done by the Ballard King Association. They're a company who does studies like this all over the country. Jeff King from their company flew in several times to our community to tour the community, meet with some people, and came up with both a market analysis and an operational expense analysis on there. The market analysis, I think you will see in all of his report, I believe, as well as the PowerPoint presentation from the work session, is on the city's website. So you can access all that information there. If anybody watching at home wants to look at that, that's all available online. What I think you'll see when you look at that, I think it's an 83-page study, last time I checked. The market analysis part of that, the conclusion on that, after going through the demographics and the socioeconomic statistics from our community, his conclusion was that this size of a community with the incomes we have can't afford a community center, that it's feasible for here. This is the type of community that can support that. He then goes on to the expense side, and I think you'll see, this is a very conservative report, the kind of thing you want from an analysis like this. We don't want surprises down the road. So you'll see in his report, he breaks out the expected revenues and the expected expenses, comes up with a net operating loss per year of $530,000. And that's what you can get from analytics. That's what you can get from somebody who's run these previously and takes the kind of things we want in here, the type of programming we would like to have in here, puts those together, and that was his conclusion on there. From the beginning, our owner's representative said, these studies are necessary. We absolutely should get this study, but we also need to look at what other facilities in Minnesota are doing, or the surrounding area, as close to here as we can get. So in conjunction with that study, we have also reached out through the association that Steve mentioned and gotten financials from several of those other community centers to see what they're doing, to see what their expenses look like versus their revenues. And one of the things that struck me and kind of puts this in perspective is, Jeff King's analysis was that these facilities typically recruit, recoup somewhere between 65, and I think he said 85 to 90% of their expenses. They recoup that much in revenue. His report showed, I think, between 64 and 66% recouping of the expenditures for Fairmont. I think when you look at the other facilities that are actually being run out there, they're much higher than that. The percentage that they're recouping of their expenditures are much higher. And so again, what we want to take from this, and let me back up, the other communities range from breaking even, maybe profiting a little, to losing maybe $200,000 a year, or being subsidized by a city or some other body to about $200,000 a year. And there are other facilities out there that we continue to study, but that's kind of the range of what we saw. And so what we said during the work session was that, when looking at operating costs, there's a range. And that range depends on what programming we choose to actually put in this facility. It matters who runs your facility. We want to make sure this facility is run by the best people we can get to run the facility, people that know what they're doing and will look at operating costs seriously, and not just assume it's going to be funded by taxpayers or somebody else and run up a huge deficit that's not necessary. So one of the things we are going to continue to focus on is drilling down further into this and getting a truly Fairmont-specific budget. And there's a group that does precisely this. The Ballard King and other things kind of told our group, this is feasible here, this is possible here. The folks we're going to bring in next, and there's a couple of options for those, do this specifically. They basically take on a pro forma executive director role, to where they're saying, if you run this, this is what you would actually do here, and they'll come up with a budget of what this will actually cost to run. And we hope to have that again before the end of the year. Tegra, our owner's rep, has talked to that group that we would contemplate hiring, they're available to help us with this. And so we should further refine that operations number to get something more Fairmont-specific than the information we have right now. And again, the cost to do that is still within the money that you guys have previously given us. So we've got as much information as we can possibly get as of now, but we still have a little more left to do, and we still have some funds to do that with, again, to get even a better idea of what this is going to cost to run going forward. So that brings us to today. And today, we know what it's going to cost to build as best as we can, we've gotten the best information we can get to date on what it's going to cost to operate, now we've got to build this thing. And the first step to doing that, in the process that we have undertaken, and then we started back in 2015, is the public commitment here. And so we are coming to the council today to get us started down that path. Once the public entities commit what they're willing to do, we will have what we've called a delta, or our campaign goal, to know exactly what we need to raise from private donors to get this thing built. And this is truly a public-private partnership here. We are asking for money from public entities, some of which from the sales tax that was mentioned earlier, and we are asking for a big contribution from the private sector as well. And that's something my committee will do going forward, that's something we're going to ask support, not financial support, but public support from the city, from the chamber, from service clubs, economic development folks. We really, if this is truly going to be the amenity we all think it's going to be, now's the time for everyone in the city who supports this and who wants to see this and wants to see Fairmont go in this direction, where we're adding amenities, where we're looking at the future of what this town is going to be, not only for my generation and my kids, but grandkids. If we want Fairmont to be relevant off into the future, we've got to start adding some amenities like this to keep the employers we have, to keep them to be able to recruit the type of employees we want living here. This is the type of thing that we need. And in order to kick off that campaign, our group is here today to ask the city to contribute $14 million to this project in accordance with what Administrator Humble suggested the city could afford during the work session. We appreciate your support on this, and anything you guys are willing to do, look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Could you just review, I'm sorry, can you just review a little bit about why you need the public commitment first before you go to the private?
Sure. And there's kind of twofold is the way I look at that answer. The first of which is, we kind of decided a long time ago that we were going to go this route in asking for the sales tax. Once we went the sales tax campaign and got that money approved, private donors are now wanting to know what that commitment's going to be. So private donors, we have been told, do not like to supplant public money. So they want to know what the, what's the city going to do first, and then say, okay, here's your gap, okay, we'll help you close that gap. They want to close it. The other routes, and we talked about this a little last week, would be to have started privately with either an undetermined budget, or we start privately and say, well, we need to raise money, you know, donors. I know what the goal is, let's say we've gotten to this point and it's $24.7 million, and I don't know what the city's going to do, how much will you give me? And what the reaction that we've got is, well, tell me what the city's going to do. In other words, they don't want to, and I think they also want to close. The ability to let private donors close the gap here and get this done is an enticing thing when you're trying to raise. If the city were to do what we asked for today, we're looking at a $10.7 million we have to raise privately. To do that first without knowing whether the city was going to put in $1 or $14 million, very difficult to do. And so that in conjunction with, this is what the experts that we brought in told us.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the committee? Something else you'd like to add, Steve or Amy?
Just to give questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, all three of you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to 15.5, local option sales tax. And Mike, we're going to start with you.
Sure. 15.5 is, the city has voter approval and legislative authority to implement a half-cent local option sales tax. The legislature, the legislation allows money to be used for recreational amenities, trails, a community center. The legislation allows for $15 million to be raised over 25 years, but to a maximum of $15 million, whichever comes first. The council has not made a specific allocation of those funds. It's up to the council to do that. What the council was doing is waiting until the business plan or a summary of the business plan was back and presented to the council. So staff's recommendation is to allocate the $600,000 of local option sales tax to the community center. But in a second suggestion by the staff, myself, the community's center would not be eligible for any financial assistance from the liquor store in the future.
Okay, so let's start with the first motion. And that would be to allocate $600,000 of the local option sales tax to the community center annually.
Move to approve.
Motion offered by Zarling, second, and second by Cypher's. Is there any further discussion? No? All in favor?
No, no. I have some further discussions.
Counselor Zarling.
As most of you are aware, I've been involved in several of these projects down the road that have been unsuccessful. I think this group should be commended on the outstanding work that they've done. I think you've gotten us farther than we've ever gotten before, and I think we're within the distance of closing on this, and it's great to see. That being said, I have to say that since the Sentinel editorial came out last week, I've received more contacts on this particular issue than I have on any other in the four years that I've been on the council. Some are, think, yeah, go, let's do it. What are you even thinking about doing this for? But the greatest majority of them are asking me, when does the public get to ask their questions? I've got some questions about this. I maybe think it's a great idea, but what's it really going to cost me? You know, what's really going to be in it? And, you know, I've been working with 15, or been liaison on the 1590 board, and so I'm familiar with it, and I think that city staff has been working with this group, and everybody's excited about it, but the excitement has all been right around kind of the group that this, that's in this room right now. And I think that there are some folks out there that do have legitimate questions and not necessarily against it, they just want to have the opportunity to get their questions answered. And I think that in order for this to finally be successful, I think it behooves the city council and this group in the next 60 days to encourage that we put together a public meeting to allow people to come and ask their questions, to get them satisfied, to help them understand what a wonderful project this will be for the community. Because I'm sensing right now that there's some resentment about the fact that the council isn't letting them ask questions. That being said, I would like to make a motion to delay consideration of this question for 60 days to give staff and the committee enough time to put together a public forum, have that done and out of the way by the time the city council votes on their final budget in December. That's my motion, is to delay consideration.
But there's still a motion on, there is...
This, I can make this motion if somebody will second it before we vote on the first motion, I think, isn't that correct?
Yes, you can do that. First motion is the main motion. This would be considered a subsidiary motion that only makes sense if it comes in after the first motion is made.
Okay.
So this is...
So this is to move it down the line?
Yes.
To just to delay considering it, or to postpone the consideration.
And I think Bruce should be here also when we vote on this.
So is that a second?
That's a second.
Okay, so, tell me what your motion is, Counselor.
My motion is to delay consideration of this question for, until our budget meeting in December, and although it's not an official part of the notion of the motion, but that gives you and you time to put together a public meeting to answer the questions that are lingering out there.
Okay, so a motion has been made. Is there a second?
I did.
Patty, are you with me? Okay, and now, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't understand, what is the risk by going ahead and just approving as it's written?
Well, the risk is that all of those folks who still have outstanding questions about the project won't have an opportunity to get their questions answered before the council takes action. The risk of not doing it, to me, is greater than the risk of, the risk of delaying consideration for 60 days is greater to the overall success of the project than not delaying it, because I think you've got some people that want some answers, and I think those answers, those questions should be answered.
Well, my point is that I think the questions really have been answered. I think, you know, universe of people out there, it was a very minor number of people. You got a lot of calls, but it's still a very, very small percentage of people who are against us, and the reason that they were shocked is they didn't know. Now, most people know, but I, why to delay this for a very small minority of people who don't know? We can still have a public hearing to share these things, and if you look at what we're proposing here, we're proposing for, just to put $600,000 a year toward the community center, which is what the vote was for to begin with, so that we're not putting anybody at risk. If we don't get it built, it's not going to be spent for that. We're not making a decision tonight to build the thing. We're making a decision to make the next step forward. And so we still have time to communicate to people what it is, and so the people that don't have answers will still get those answers. They're not risking anything, we're not spending anything that's going to happen, and the only thing that did this was at the Sentinel editorial board, even though they have a very good reporter who's given them all this information, and even though that they have a feasibility study on their desk, they choose, as usual, not to ask any questions on what's going on. So they put an editorial out there with, saying there's lots of questions, when there aren't lots of questions. All these questions have been answered, and they even have those answers, but they chose to say that they have questions, which is really strange to me. All they had to do was ask their reporter, and she could have answered all those questions for them. So the questions have been answered. The key is, there's a lot of people who haven't heard those, because not everybody's engaged as you and I are.
And that's, and that was my point from the very beginning, is that this group is very well-informed, but there's a group of people in our community who are very uninformed, and unfortunately, that's what happens, until it gets right down to the end, that those people don't come out and say, I haven't heard anything about this, what's it about? You know, the questions they're asking, or the comments that I've heard, you know, when I voted for the sales tax, I was voting for it because it said that it was for all kinds of recreational amenities, and now the city council is telling me that they're not going to allow any money for any other entities.
But Jim, you know that, the way it was campaigned for, it was campaigned for by the 1590 Committee. They paid for it, they did all, everybody who voted on it, other than maybe a handful of people, knew that it was for a community center. That was all the campaigning for the local option sales tax was about community center. We put the other amenities on there as a backup in case, what if this doesn't happen? We have a place to spend the money. I remember Counselor Anderson sitting right over there, was all upset that we were changing the ballot question back to adding those two things, and Wes Clare saying right here, assured him, Terry, this is a backup. He said right here, to calm him down, this is a backup, this is just in case we don't build a community center. So this community is known, and delaying it 60 days is just going to extend the process unnecessarily. Those people who complained because of the editorial board's irresponsible reporting, those people have a chance to be heard. They'll still have their questions answered, because the questions are already answered, they just haven't heard about it yet. So we're not putting any community members at risk, but we're putting this project more at risk by delaying it, and it's unnecessary.
I can't imagine that delaying it 60 days is going to impede the progress of this group. You know, they have funds available to continue to move forward, we have a proposal coming up in our proposed budget to authorize spending over the next year or two to do all of the things they want to do, so, and the group that was here told us they could continue to move forward within the budget that they already have. So it's not delaying their project either. Now, you know, I understand your perspective on this, and I understand your perspective on the Sentinel editorial board, and I, whenever they agree with me, I think they're doing a great job, and when they don't, I think they get their heads in the clouds.
Well, my point is that they have the information, but they refuse to look at it, many issues. They don't call and ask anybody, they just make an opinion without asking.
And I don't...
And really, it only incited, what did we get? I got three or four calls and five or six emails, we all got no more than 10 contacts from people. That's a very small minority, and what I'm saying is that you want to delay this for 60 days because of just a very minute amount of people that weren't informed, but once they get informed, most of them are going to be agreeable to it.
And I'm...
Because, because most of the time, when they get the facts, Wayne, they'll agree to it when they see, because it's pretty indisputable, the benefit to the community.
I think a lot of these people thought this half a cent was going to build their community center. They didn't realize...
Almost nobody did. Almost nobody did.
Well...
I don't think they realized that their taxes were going to go up at a minimum of 6.5 percent, and maybe even 12 percent if they don't get the $10 million from private donors.
Doesn't the resolution say that there won't be anything done unless they raise the money? Didn't that says right in the resolution? See, that's the thing, this is all dependent on them raising the 10.7 million.
Okay, well, and, okay, first of all, Counselors Zarling, do you have something else you'd like to say right now?
No, I just, we have a motion in the second, and I guess I'd like to see it voted on.
Okay. I'm only going to let you speak because you're part of the community center.
Correct, and that's, I'm speaking on behalf of...
And then Counselor Cypher's, if you have a chance, if you have something you'd like to say, then I'd like to have council members have a chance to say what they'd like to say.
All right, so my name's Michael Edmund. I am on the Board of Directors of Project 1590. I'm also a member of the Fairmont Community Center Action Committee. I actually chaired the very first meeting that Brandon or Steve mentioned, when there was 60 people, and so I've been heavily involved in this process. And I think I want to, on behalf of the committee, I want to say a few things regarding Counselor Zarling's concerns. We absolutely will have an open meeting. We're not subject to open meeting rules and laws like your council is, but we will have a meeting open to the public, and we'll do that in October. I can promise you that we will do that. The other thing that I do want to say in our defense is, for those in the community that do not feel that we have been open and inclusive of everyone, I think that is a very unfair characterization. For the past, probably 18 months to two years, Steve Hawkins, myself, Brandon Edmondson, and others in our committee have been going to, I mean, we're talking dozens of community groups to give them presentations on the plan and the process, and I think it's just an unfair characterization if anybody in this community thinks that they haven't had ample opportunity to reach out to anybody in our group to say, what are you guys doing? How can it be part of the process? Whether it's on social media, in person, phone call, email, we've been very open and always encourage people, more input is better. But as I mentioned, that first meeting we had, and I want to say that was in February of 2017, it's 60 people at that meeting. You can't do what we've done the last two years with 60 people, and so we had to narrow it by design so we could keep it moving forward, but we have constantly said we want people's input, and so I want to make sure that if people are somehow under the impression we haven't done so, contact us, we are open. My couple, two last points I want to make. Delaying this gives me significant concerns on our rollout of our private fundraising. Right now, we're towards the end of September. This meeting would be in October. If you brought this back up in November, we wouldn't have some sort of confirmed or official position of the body of the city until December. And if we're approaching private donors who may want to give us large sums of money, they may wish to do that over a period of years. They might want to do that in fiscal year 18 and 19 for tax write-off purposes. If we can't give them confirmation from this body until three weeks left in the 2018 fiscal year, it's just not realistic to think that they're going to be able to do that. So if you did delay this two months, I do believe it would dramatically impact our ability to raise funds, both in the amount and the speed at which we could raise those funds, because it essentially kills anything we could raise in the balance of fiscal year 2018. And the last thing, and I am an attorney, and I represent cities, and I don't want to be giving legal advice, but I do have some concerns about the motion that you're doing. If this impacts the levy, I believe you would need to approve it now. I don't think you can table it for two months and then approve it, because that would be an increase to the levy impact. If it doesn't impact the levy, I don't know, I just want to make, you guys will figure that out, just be aware of that issue. I think there's some concern.
And I just want to make clear that delaying, what I've said in the work session, and I'll say again tonight, what I said is, based on the city's financial structure, we could afford 14 million. We're not putting $14 million in the budget tonight, so that is a moot issue. What we are putting in the budget tonight is the local option sales tax, so that there are funds available to move, to continue to move forward if this council so chooses to. But that doesn't impact the levy either, because that's local option sales tax, but it is in the budget, and they could reduce it in December if they chose to, but tonight it's in the preliminary budget.
I want to make sure that you're... Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Cypher's, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that Mike answered.
Okay.
My concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I make one clarification? I want you all to understand that the criticism that I've heard is not from your group. I've never heard anybody say that your group isn't open or anything like that. What I'm hearing from is, why isn't the city council giving us the opportunity as citizens in this community to talk? So I just want to be sure that, you know, they're being crabby at us, not at you, okay?
Right, but if that's the case...
That'd be great if they did.
Nope, 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 no comment.
So the point is, is that...
Thank you.
Yes, there are some people that rightly, they're going to feel like they haven't had a voice, but the voice has been out there, and we all know, every one of you know, that this has been out there, that has been talked about, that there've been plenty of hearings about this, that if we can't say, listen, I'm sorry you didn't hear about it, but we have, the process is in motion, and we've made some commitments to this committee, and to now put a two-month delay on it, when you have a small, a very minute number of people who feel they haven't, I understand, I'd be upset too if I didn't know about it, but that doesn't mean that we should give them the power to delay this for 60 days. That would cause a lot more issues for this whole project than upsetting 50, 20 to 50 people, if it's that many, you know what I'm saying? So I just don't think, the fact that that's what we're elected for, we're elected for to take the arrows, you know, so that when somebody called me, called me or wrote me and told me, you know, I got right on the email and said, here's why this is so important, and why we need to keep it moving forward, and many of the people said, oh, it's only going to cost that much, or, oh, you know, people, they'll get the information, the information that you say they don't have, they'll get it, most of them, you know, in spite of what Wayne feels, they'll agree with it. Not everybody, but most will. But to stop the process for two months, and to put a crimp into their fundraising plans because you have a handful of people that you feel are maybe rightly so uninformed, I don't, Jim, I don't think that's a reason to delay the process.
I understand, and if I could make just one more comment, then I'll be done.
Okay.
You know, you talk about all of the public discussion there has been about it, but I'm racking my brain trying to think of a time when the city council held a public meeting to say, here's what we're going to build, here's what it's going to cost, here's what we want to spend with sales tax, here's the impact that it's going to be on your property tax. I don't recall that we've done that, and that's what these folks are asking us for. I didn't find out until last Monday night what we anticipate the actual impact on property taxes is going to be. So I don't know how you can say that, you know, the community has known this all along. That's why I think it's important that we take the time to have that public meeting.
I think we still can have that public meeting, but as well, I just want, I want the public to know that the questions and concerns that I received were very minute in the negative. There were, yes, there were a few, but after talking with them and discussing it, they, you know, they completely turned around. Yes, there were a few that were totally against it, but then I also received a lot of, come on, let's go for it, let's get this done. So I didn't experience all that you experienced.
I have had probably 10 to 1 telling me to vote against it rather than vote for it.
And did you give them the reasons why they should, or not?
Well, I'm not necessarily for it either.
So you didn't give them any reasons why it...
I gave them my reasons why I don't think we should vote for it.
Okay.
So can I ask somebody to call the question? Is that what I need to do?
Call the question.
I call the question? Right on. Okay, so, right now, the motion in front of the council is to delay for 60 days allocation of $600,000 for local option sales tax to the community center annually, and for a public hearing to be set within those 60 days. And that is the motion that is currently on the table, and so all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of that motion, say no.
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 Against the motion, you mean?
Yeah.
No.
Let's have a roll call vote, Patty, and then we'll have everything. Zarling?
Yes.
Hasek?
Yes.
Hawkins?
No.
Cypher's?
No.
So I get the, I get the tiebreaker vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I am going to vote no.
Thank you.
And so with that, is there a motion to allocate, can we go back to this first motion again now, Libby? Is there a motion, please, to allocate $600,000 of the local option sales tax to the community center annually?
That motion is in place.
Wait a second.
I think there's some...
The mayor voted against my motion.
I voted against that, yeah.
So she's saying, let's go ahead and vote on them.
Let's vote now to see if they...
And we have that motion, Jim and Wayne made those.
Yes.
Yes.
So we have the motion already?
Yeah, Jim, remember, Jim made the motion.
You're right.
We have a motion and a second already.
Thank you very much, Patty. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
I guess I'm confused here.
Okay, that's okay, let's stop then, okay? And what are you confused on?
What are we, what are we voting on now?
Well, now we're going to vote on allocate, and we voted, the motion went down, two to three, to delay it 60 days. So now we're going to have a motion to allocate the $600,000 of the local option sales tax to the community center annually, and we'll, and we're just in the discussion right now. And for with that, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, and so let's have a roll call vote again, please, Patty.
Zarling?
No.
Hasek?
No.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Cypher's?
Yes.
And I will be the tiebreaker again, and I will vote, yeah, and I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second motion that's in front of us by staff is the community center financial support is not eligible for liquor store funding. Is there a motion to approve, is there someone to approve that motion, please? Motion offered by Zarling? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Hawkins? Is there any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
So we're still going to have a public meeting?
We're going to get, not right now, but we're getting to that, so...
We don't care what they want to.
If we want to, we can. We're not, that's not part of it right now, Wayne. And so right now, it is that the community center will have $600,000 allocated to them from the local option sales tax annually. That's the motion that passed. Okay, we're now going to move on to 15.6, and it's funding for the community center, and Mike, I'm going to start with you.
As I said on Monday night at our work session on September 17th, the city staff outlined a, the financial feasibility for the city to commit 14 million to the community center using both sale... the community center using both sales tax and property tax funds. That packet is in your agenda, and a resolution is attached to that that basically lays out that the city council will commit fourteen million, and as they commit fourteen million, we're not authorizing anyone to build anything tonight, but they're saying they'll commit fourteen million dollars if the community center committee can raise ten million, seven hundred thousand dollars in funds outside of the city.
Can you explain what the purpose of this resolution, even though we're not authorizing anything, but why we need to do that?
Well, what I, the committee's asking for a firm commitment. At the work session, what I'd like to have done, but in anticipation of them wanting a firmer commitment, what I'm saying is, I think financially, the city can afford to support a fourteen million dollar project, if another entity can raise the balance. Maybe we didn't need the resolution, but there's nothing to bind the council
Right.
to anything unless you make a vote up here. I can say that the council can afford it all day long, but I don't get to spend the money. That's up to all of you. So Paul and I and other staff have done the analysis. We think the city's financial structure can afford the fourteen million. This resolution would then, at least until another, and Libby, help me out, and at least until another council or another entity, or another vote could say, no. I mean, you can't, they've only, it's been two years, they've only raised two million dollars. We want to, we need to go in another direction now.
But at this point, you're saying this is what you're going to do.
Correct.
I think the purpose of it is, is we need, the reason we need a resolution is, we need to have something said that we're willing to do this if they raise the money. And they can't really go out and ask for private funding unless they have a commitment.
This is, I think what the committee asked for.
So the motion is in front of us would be to approve resolution two zero one eight dash three zero as presented, and it does state that the city will commit fourteen million dollars for the construction of the community center, if the community center is able to have pledged ten thousand seven, ten million, seven hundred thousand dollars for the community center construction, is what the resolution, is what the resolution states.
Move to approve.
Motion offered by Zarlene?
Second.
And second by Cypher's. Is there any further discussion?
I guess what I'd like to say is, in our school system, we have forty-five percent of the kids on free and reduced lunch. What are we going to do? We're going to tax them more. I just think this is wrong.
Okay.
I think our average income for this community is, from looking on the internet anyway, is per family forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's twenty-four dollars an hour per family. You divide, if there's two-income family, that comes out to twelve dollars an hour. I don't think there's a lot of people in this community that cannot afford this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zarlene?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to delay consideration of this for sixty days to give the opportunity to, for the folks in the community that have questions about it to get their questions answered.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, let's have some discussion.
Well, we, do we need discussion? We know...
Oh, I have discussion. I have some things I'd like to say. So does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
I think my discussion was probably pretty much handled the last time I made the motion.
Yeah, I'll just say that I think in what pertains to, well, is this one, have we put a motion on this yet, or is it just an alternate motion?
We had a motion by Zarlene and second by Cypher's to approve the resolution.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Two zero one, one eight point three zero, and then Counselor Zarlene has a motion
To delay it.
To delay the consideration of the resolution as stated.
Okay. I'll just say that, you know, in some of the responses to, in regards to the extra sales tax, and what Wayne has said that, you know, people can't afford it, I, it basically, Wayne, the people in your ward will pay the least amount. We know that a fifty thousand, or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house will cost fifty-two dollars a year, and, you know, your ward has the, probably the lowest property average taxable value in the city. And so the people in your ward will be paying, you know, twenty to thirty dollars a year on average, if that. And so I don't know how you can say that that's overtaxing people, twenty to thirty dollars a year, and the property taxes that will enhance the, the sales tax funding that's already there. This is the reason that the staff is recommending this, is because we have the sales tax money. And the impact to the taxpayer is very minimal. I think Jim's point is that he thinks that they should have more of a voice before we do it. But the point is, the amount in what your statement that parents can't, people can't afford it. If they own a house, they can afford twenty to thirty dollars a year to enhance a community that's going to make this community more valuable. This has just been an awesome way, the way Mike presented it, to set this up, to have somebody who lives on Noah Drive contacted me today to vote no. And I said, you have probably one of the highest priced homes in town, and you're, it's going to cost you a hundred and forty dollars a year for this, you know, to invest in a community that's going to bring an economic impact that's going to...
How?
If you don't know by now, Wayne, I'm sorry. Did you read any of the information? So the point is, is that, my point is, is that this is a very low cost to the taxpayer. The taxpayer is paying very little in that six point five percent on an individual basis. It is very, very affordable. And that's been the beauty of using the sales tax and adding this to it, so that we can get the rest of the commitments. There are twenty-five cities in this state, smaller than Fairmont, that have a community center, twenty-five. And there's only four larger than Fairmont that have a community center. Three of them, one of them Sock Rapids, which has Saint Cloud and Sartell with a community center right next door. North Mankato doesn't have one, but North Mankato is a mile from the YMCA. And Big Lake doesn't have one, but there's one next door in Monticello and next door in Becker, Minnesota. So the point is, is that we know that communities thrive with community centers. We have the data. We have everything that we need to know that this is, and plus, we know that the community wants this huge.
I've lived in five communities that haven't had a community center, and have all been bigger than Fairmont. People go to a community for a job, maybe for health care or for schools. They don't move here for a community center. Ronald Reagan got our economy going when I got out of college by lowering taxes, not raising them. You say that you're a conservative Republican. Ronald Reagan lowered taxes, and that's what got most of people my age work.
Thank you.
We did hear from two community members that moved here tonight, you know, moved here, and a community center means a lot to them, whether it's for their families or for their professional work as well. But I also want to say is, that free and reduced lunch number probably isn't quite fair, because many of those free and reduced lunch people are, do not own their homes. So you need to take that number and see who are...
The rent's going to go up more, because the property owner's going to have taxes.
Okay, just a second, Wayne. Would you like to say your last thing?
Yeah, I just don't think that you can, you can use the free and reduced lunch number fairly without knowing if their homeowners are...
But they're renting someplace, and in order to rent, your taxes, the taxes are going to go up, their rent's going to go up, and they're paying for it.
Counselor Zarlene?
I just have one more comment, and then I'll try and be quiet for a while.
Okay.
I think that the statement that Councilor Hawkins made about property taxes going up six and a quarter percent, and that that wasn't a big deal, is part of what some of the residences that I've talked to are concerned about, because that only addresses the construction part of it. I think it's easy to say that if the study that was commissioned is correct in the deficit, and that that's the, that turns out to be the deficit. Now, I'm hearing that that may be high, it may be low. But if the number that they've presented in the study is correct, then I think it's going to generate another six and a quarter percent on property taxes to pay for the subsidy. So that's, that's part of what the confusion is, and that's why people are feeling like they don't have all of the information. And now I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike? Okay.
I'll just say that, Jim, that, you know, you make your point, because you're watching out for the taxpayer. And I guess all I'm saying is that, that is a small number. The amount of, the fact that we have the local option sales tax to do this, and the number of people that generated this response, what is, is still a very small number. The people in this community who voted for the local option sales tax, knowing that we were going to be doing this project, it's, you know, it's a good, responsible way to spend our money, to have something that, there's nothing else that we do. We spent tons and tons of millions on trails and parks, which I don't regret that you've done that over the years. I don't regret that a bit. But none of that will bring in the economic impact that this project will, this is an economic impact machine. We know, the studies have said, that there are businesses that will look at our community when a community center gets built, to consider relocating. We know that, as Amy said, that they're...
Who?
Wayne, if you sat in on that, you would know. It just is, I trust the experts who do this. They do it every day. They've done it in many, many, many communities, and that's what they say. It happens all the time. If you don't believe me, that's fine. But the studies have been done. It's been done that way. And the other thing that we do, and to give credit to, you know, to Jim, who's been the city administrator for years, one of the reasons that we can't afford this is because Fairmont has been fiscally responsible for many, many years. So that we can, with this project and with the local option sales tax, we can raise this six point five percent levy that's proposed. It's not, we're not even voting on that, but that's proposed. If we get that far, okay, if we get that far, it will propose that we would do that. We can still do that and still be, from a debt standpoint, very fiscally responsible, you know, you know, to the legacy that you left when you ran this place, Jim. So the point is, is that we've done everything right, including being fiscally responsible for all these years. So a small increase, we can make that decision. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
I just have to say one more thing.
Okay.
So is that a compliment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I meant, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to have to say that.
Okay. I'll bring up, before we vote on this, and my concerns that I have, and for this, for the whole project and for this resolution, is that I don't have enough, I don't have enough facts yet, community center. I don't have, I don't have the complete fact on what the operating expense is going to be for this community center. I need to know that. I need to know, I don't want to see five hundred and thirty thousand dollars deficit spending. I want to see numbers. I want to see a, a public hearing being happened, and I want a chance for people to come and voice their opinion before any decision is made as far as a commitment. And I cannot believe that the people that you are going to go and ask to contribute private monies, their first question isn't going to be, what is the operating expenses going to be? I can't believe that people would be willing to put their own monies in before they had a definite answer of that. My, if I voted on this, I think you can, you can hear where my voice is coming from. It's not because I'm against the community center. That is, I am very pro the community center. I need to know more numbers, and it's going to just take some time. Mayo Clinic, if that's where the building is, nothing's signed on the dotted line yet. Well, nothing is, there's just something, it's just too, for me, as an elected official, it's too early for me to make that final decision yet. I do strongly support giving you monies each year for that local option sales tax. But that's where my concern is, is the operating expenses of the whole, of the, of the project. And I need to see some answers, as you had said, Brandon, in your presentation, that there's still, we still need to work on that. That's still something that has to be worked out. And so, and I want to have a public hearing, because I did hear from people on both sides. I heard from people that very strongly support it. I heard from people that said absolutely not. But I do, what I have asked people from the very beginning is to please keep an open mind, and to listen very carefully to what the facts are. And so that's, those are my two cents in the discussion part of it. And so, and being I get to call the question?
Can I, can I respond to yours?
One time. Yep.
Yeah, I just want to respond to your concern about the operating costs. I agree with you on that. I don't know that I would want to build it if it was going to cost a half a million dollars a year deficit. But I don't think that by passing this resolution, so this project can go forward, if they come out and say, listen, the only way we're going to make this thing work is if we have a five hundred thousand dollar deficit, that doesn't mean that this resolution is committing us to anything. This resolution is committing us, so they can go start the private funding, that if everything falls into place, we're not committing ourselves to a community center with this vote. What we're doing with this vote is giving them a number that we're committed to if everything works out, including the operational costs. I don't, I don't want a community center that's going to lose half a million dollars a year.
That's not what this resolution says. But this resolution says, is that it will commit fourteen million dollars for the construction of a community center, as raised an additional ten million, seven hundred dollars pledge to the community center, is what the resolution says.
Right.
And it doesn't say anything in there about if the operating expenses come in at a certain amount, if it can be determined on who owns the building, if it can be determined on if the land can be given to, there's nothing in there that says it. But it clearly, in my opinion, it clearly states that the city will commit fourteen million dollars to the construction of the community center, and I'm not willing to pledge that yet. I'm not willing to commit that yet in a resolution.
But don't you feel that if those other things don't come into place, that this body will still have a chance to say, we can't do this?
I'm willing to say, I'm just willing to say that at this time, that that is just, that, that it, that just doesn't work for me.
So they can't go to the private donors now, as Mike was saying. They can't go to the private donors and get the year-end without a commitment. They just can't.
If anybody is listening and wants to be a private donor to this project, they're paying attention to what's going on right now. And I, and besides Counselor Hassick that has come out and said that he's not for this community center, I have not heard anybody on this, around this table say to, say yet, that they are not, they do not want the community center. I've not heard one council person besides Counselor Hassick say that. What I have heard is that people just, that they're just not willing to commit this amount of money till, first of all, the community has a chance to voice their thoughts on this, and which is to delay it sixty days, so that opportunity can, and for more answers to be found. Those, more answers to be found takes money. We've allocated that amount of money to the community center to do that, and it's just going to take some more time, Counselor Hassick, Hawkins. That's all I'm asking. And that's my opinion. You have a different opinion, and that's why we vote.
Right, well, yeah, my, my opinion is based on, you're right, it's my opinion. And, but it's based on the knowledge of all the people that have done all the work.
Oh, there's no doubt.
And have been intimately involved and know how this is going to go. And so I trust them more than I trust, well, Jim, Jim was partially involved, so I trust him a little more than you. But other than that, I wouldn't trust anybody else at this table besides them. So I just say, listen, they're the pros, they've done the work. What we're telling tonight is, we don't trust them. That's what this vote's going to say.
Well, I can assure you, it has absolutely nothing to do with trust. And Counselor Zarlene, and then I'm going to call the vote.
I'll shut up.
I want to, I want to make it very clear that my point is not a distrust in this community.
Absolutely not.
I have more faith in this committee than I have in any other. The study that this committee brought forward to us at last week's meeting says that based on the professional estimate at this point, the operating deficit of this facility as laid out is five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year. That's what the study says that they brought to us. There's a lot of debate about whether or not that's accurate. All we're saying is, let's find out what is accurate, and then move on with it. I don't, like the mayor said, I'm not here in opposition to the project. I'm just looking for some clarification. I would finally, I would finally like to get it built, so I didn't have to hear about it anymore personally.
Okay. So thank you. And I am going to call the vote. And so the motion right now is to... And so, the motion right now is to delay, would that be delay consideration of the resolution presented for 60 days for a public hearing to take place? Is that the correct? Is that to be correct?
That's correct.
Got that, Patty? Okay, and this is a roll call vote. Zareling?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hawkins?
No.
Cypher?
No.
And so, it's, I get to be the tiebreaker vote again and I am going to vote yes on this one. The resolution passed. 15.7.
So, there's, there's an underlying vote, so that doesn't, that just doesn't take place then?
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
This replaces that.
Yes, because it's been voted to continue it out, to postpone it for consideration at a later date.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Libby, for clarifying that. 15.7, 1590 Kids Just Want to Have Fun Mini Golf. And Mike?
Ed, Ed Willett, a member of the 1590 Kids Just Want to Have Fun Committee would like to ask approval to use the city property next to the aquatic park to build a mini golf course potentially if they, if they raise their funding and they're here tonight to talk to the council about that project. You have a, some fact sheets behind Agenda Item 15.7. Ed?
Ed? Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to approach the council and my name is Ed Willett and we have two other members here from our group and that's Christie Olson and Betsy Tino. And there's three other members in our group that aren't here this evening, Laura Olson and Kendra Pomeransky, is that correct? And Megaslamah. And anyway, again, as Mike had said, you have been supplied the same packet that we proposed to the park board last week and I believe they have a recommendation for you. And outlined in that, for the people that maybe are on TV or don't know, on the one page, it's again a nine-hole mini golf course that has room for 18 holes and the diagram was drawn up by Troy Number's in Engineering here in the city. And also included in that packet is estimates that we have got put together to put, put together to make this possible and they came in at $54,800. Another page on here, just for demonstration purposes, was a temporary structure that was out at the fairgrounds and that was mostly put in there just for the idea of the obstacles that could be on there. And the very last page is another facility that's in this area, it's actually up at Truman, that is more like what we were thinking, which would be more permanent or very permanent. So, it'd be like concrete with carpet and things like that. So, what we would be requesting for you to consider, again, as Mike had explained, was a mini golf course, nine-hole, that would be on city property and it would be just behind or to the west of the aquatic, aquatic park. And we'd also like you to consider some financial contribution towards that. It would be our intent after construction, if we raise the funds and proceed with this, that it would be turned back over to the city and come under the park system, if you will. And what, how we would intend to raise our money would be similar to, to the way that our group raised our money for the playground that was put in the mall that we did just recently. And that would be to approach some community service organizations, make presentations to them, write grants, which we did on the other thing, sponsor a hole, we've discussed that, and probably lastly donations. So, also outlined in the packet that we had, we're looking at and we've had communication with some other groups to partner with. And one of them, which I've spoke with Mike, is the swimming pool. With the swimming pool being right there, we thought it'd be very convenient for, to place the putters and the balls there so that people could approach them and perhaps pay a small deposit, use that during the operation hours of the pool and hand them out. Obviously, after hours, probably set by the, the park, the hours that one could play on there, but after the pool hours, people could obviously bring their own if they so choose. Couple of other options we've explored and talked to them. I've spoke with Jenny at the library. In other words, after the pool season, which is Memorial Day to Labor Day, she said that they would be glad to distribute during their hours. And I've spoke also with Ronnie from C E, C E F and she said we could work something out with them to be able to reserve them, reserve the stuff and pick it up. So, those are some other options and we're kind of excited to work with some of those groups. And lastly, the high school, I've spoke with Joe Brown, who put me in contact with shop instructor Brad Johnson and we're exploring the possibility or the feasibility of possibly having the students in the high school design some of the obstacles as well as constructing them. And obviously, the expenses would be paid by us, not board by the, by the school or anything like that. So, I think this would be a well-constructed, long-lasting, financially responsible, family recreational, community amenity and I guess I'd like you to consider that. And I realize you don't vote on stuff like that tonight or where we're approaching, but would you have any other things you'd like to add?
Christie, Betsy, anything you'd have, like to add?
No.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Great leadership again.
Thanks.
And there actually is a possible motion and that would be to allow Kids Just Want to Have Fun Committee to bin, build a mini golf course on city-owned property next to the aquatic park. So moved. Motion offered by Cypher's and seconded by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Go get it, Ed and committee. 15.8, 2019 Proposed Budget and Tax Levy. And Mike?
I'll just start off with a, with a couple of comments. This is the hearing to set our preliminary budget for 2019. After tonight, this budget could be reduced, but it could not be increased at our final meeting in December. Just some, some key highlights you'll see. We have a $65,000 airport project and most of that will be federal funds. We have $3.5 million in bonding for a new streets and parks building. Part of the existing streets and parks building were, was built in 19, in the early 1960s in one of our last OSHA inspections. They weren't real happy with a lot of parts of our building, so that's a project. The budget shows $2.3 million in potential community center donations from outside sources. It also shows 1.2 million in funds that were, would be set aside from the local option sales tax that could be used if you so choose to continue to move the project forward. If those funds weren't used, they would be set in a reserve account, just like, like the other money, but if, if we don't say that we're going to spend it, we can't later. So, in December, after we know more, you get your 60 days down, there, there could be discussion on eliminating a portion of that from, from the budget if you so choose, but right now, it makes the most sense to continue to move things forward. General fund expenditures are reduced from last year from primarily capital and just one-time capital expenditures, we're down over $700,000. So, there, we're going to spend some money and, and cut a little money and try to keep all this within a 3.9% levy increase. So, I'll let Paul put the presentation up on the TV monitors and walk us through this. I would, Paul's presentation, because of the, what you have in your packet, the, the size of that doesn't show real well on, on the TV screen, so it's an abbreviated and it will not follow your packet 100%. We can go back to the packet for clarification if we need to.
Thanks, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, the, the council is required to, to pass the two resolutions tonight. One is to approve the budget and then one is to set the preliminary tax levy for 2019. That information actually has to be certified to the county auditor by the end of this month, September 30th. And then we'll have, like Mike said, our final budget hearing will be on December 10th. That me, that meeting starts at 6:00 PM. We have to move that back a half an hour and so we'll bring a final budget at that time for the council to approve. So, getting started, the first, first slide we're looking at is our general fund revenues. Our general fund covers the majority of the operations within the city. That's our general government, public works, public safety and culture and rec. So, it's, covers a, a large range of operations for the city. Our, our taxes are increasing $125,000 in 2019. The street and park building, we have in the budget at $5 million. In order to fund the debt service on that facility, the debt payments wouldn't start until 2020, but we looked at spreading out the, the tax impact over these next two years. So, we are recommending doing like a 2.8% increase that would raise $125,000 in, in 2019 and then another 2.8% increase would be needed in 2020 to fund the full debt service payment on that public works facility. So, that first, that $125,000 in 2019 is in the general fund because we haven't issued the debt yet. It can't be considered a debt, debt levy until there's debt issued. So, that, those funds would be put in a reserve account that we've been building up over the last several years that would go towards lowering the, the amount that we'd have to bond for in, in the end of 2019. So, not a whole lot of changes in our licenses and permits. State aid is down a little bit. Last year in 2018, we had $150,000 grant shown for our Street of Creek Park Trail, which we don't have any grant or expected to receive any grants in 2019. So, that's the reason for the decrease in our, in our state aid. Charges for services are up a little bit in, in 2019. We've, we're budgeting for the $50,000 contribution from the school for the SRO position that was not included in our, in our revenues in 2018. And then the transfers in to the general fund, the majority of that comes from our public utilities funds, water, sewer and electric is $825,000 is a payment in lieu of taxes from our utilities to our general fund. And the balance of that $415,000 is coming from the liquor store for capital projects and there's a slide a little further on that'll show the projects that we're going to be funding with our liquor store money in 2018, so. Any questions on our general fund revenue?
We're transferring less out of the transfers this year or next year than we did in 18 then.
Last year, I think we, we funded a little bit more out of the liquor store.
Right.
So, that's why the transfers in was a little higher last year than this year.
Thank you.
Our general fund expenditures, I think Mike had said, you know, that, that it's shown that it's down $726,000. Our capital expenditures for 2019's down actually a million, million, just over a million dollars. So, the majority of that is one-time capital expenditures. We, we do have our union contracts in 2019 have, has a 3.25% COLA increase, so there is some wages and benefit increases. We, we do have a rate increase under para, under the police para pension. They, the state has increased the amount that the employer and the employee has to contribute, so we had a, a small increase from that. And we also are experiencing some increases in our premium for workers' compensation. Had some, some bad luck with some on, on workplace injuries that's led to the increase of that. So, total wages and benefits, I think, is up $143,000 in 2019 and that's scattered across, you know, all the, the programs, general government, public safety, public works, parks and rec. And also in, in general government, I just want to point out too, we, we put in $15,000 for our administrative citations to implement that new program, so there will be a cost that's to get some new software so we can kind of start that process and track what we're doing with, with that, so. Any questions with the general fund expenditures? Next, we have our special revenue funds. That covers economic development, lake restoration, our SMAC facility and the airport. So, state aid, the, the state aid revenue number of $777,000, majority of that is for the new tea hanger that's being planned for, for the airport for 2019. I believe it's $650,000 of that is for, for the tea hanger. The other portion of that is we get state aid for maintaining the airport. That's $60,000. So, that's why it's up a little bit from 2018. Everything else is pretty consistent. You can see we're, we're not doing any property tax increase for any of our special revenue funds. Our local option sales tax, we, we've maintained the budget of $600,000. We know we haven't had a full year of collections yet, but I think we'll probably be closer to, to $700,000, but just to, to be conservative and waiting until we have a full 12 months of history to really see how that'll come in. We left the budget at $600,000 for 2019. So, total revenues of our special revenue fund is just over 2.3 million. For economic develop, economic development, we, we're showing a slight increase to about $16,000 to $246,000. We also have a slight increase in SMAC. There's a networking license fee that we pay, I believe it's a three-year, maybe a five-year licensing fee that we have to pay to provide the IT network infrastructure there. That's $10,000, so that's the increase there. And then we've talked about the tea hanger for the airport. That's the reason for the, the large increase at the airport, it's that capital project for that new tea hanger. And then the 1.2 million transfer is the sales tax, the $600,000 for the first two years. So, we'll have a full year in 2018 and then another full year in 2019 and so that's where we came up with the 1.2 million. And I believe we talked about that number at our workshop last Monday is what we would commit to the community center for 2019. So, that's actually being transferred to a capital project fund for the future construction of, of the community center if it moves forward, so. Any, any questions with that? Here's a, a list of all of our departmental capital projects for 2019. Just some of the things I wanted to point out for the library, they've, they've been replacing a few windows every year. They've got some old windows that need to be replaced for, for more energy efficiency. I think we've budgeted $5,000 for the library for windows. For the fire hall, we're putting in $30,000 for remodeling the facility. There's been some studies about, you know, whether or not we need a new facility and I think it looked like, more like we could address some of the issues there through improvements at, at the current facility. So, that's where we're going to start in 2019 is, you know, $30,000 to start some of those remodel projects at the fire hall. At the aquatic park, we have $25,000 for reshingling the aquatic park, aquatic park facility. It's got the wood shake shingles. I think they are going to switch that to more of an asphalt shingle roof. It's a little bit cheaper, a little more affordable, but that facility is getting up there in age and we are having spots where they, they've had them in patching different areas. There's been some holes and some light showing through the roof, so it's probably time that we put a little money into the roof, so we're included in that. Also, under parks and rec, last year, the city had committed $150,000 to the adventure playground with the anticipation that there would be another $150,000 being asked from the city for 2019. So, I've included that $150,000. So I've included that 150,000 in there for the adventure playground. And I believe, you know, that, that puts them at their mark of what they needed to move forward with that project in 2019. There are some members here from the community or from the committee, the adventure playground committee to here. So they may be able to answer any questions you have on, on that project, but that's what we've got in the budget for 2019 is $150,000. Also included in the parks and rec budget is $190,000 for the Margaret Street Trail Extension. And the total city portion of that project will be 555,000. That'll be split, split out over two years. The full funding of this, we're recommending using liquor store money. So 190,000 will come from liquor store funds. But the first phase of it, the engineering, there is no federal money for that. So that'll be 100% the city's share. And then next year it would be another 365,000 from the city in order to finish that, that project. That would be the-
Is that where we found out that that bridge was going to be a bigger deal than what we thought?
That's, yes, that's correct. And then for the airport, the 790,000 is for that new, new tea hanger. For the improvement projects, I think Mike had touched a little bit on, on those, the new public works facility, we have that in there at $5 million. We've been sending aside money for the last few years to help offset the amount that we'd have to issue in bonds and the property tax impact that would have on our citizens. We've been able to put away just over 1.5 million. So that would leave 3.4 million that we would issue in capital improvement bonds to complete that facility or start construction of that facility in 2019. The 2019 street improvements, we're looking at spending $3 million in, in streets for 2019. I think the projects are still yet to be identified, but there'll be meetings in the spring, early spring of 2019 with that improvement program identifying those projects. And we'll expect to receive 725,000 in aid, state aid for that project. 375,000 of that will come from our utility funds for water and sewer. Those will come out of the reserve accounts. And then we'll be looking at issuing around 1.9 million in special assessment bonds to finance the, the balance of that $3 million project. And then the community center at $3.5 million, when we were, when we had discussions and take our owners rep last Monday had gone over the expected timeline of the project and what was reasonably expected to be spent in 2019. They had an amount of one and a half million to three and a half million dollars in, in 2019 to kind of keep that project moving forward. And so I've included the 1.2 million dollars in sales tax that the, that the council had said that they would commit to a community center. And then I'm anticipating the balance would have to be from private donations. So if, if the community center committee was able to raise another 2.3 million, that would be available then to, to spend in 2019 towards, you know, the initial design of the facility. So-
Say that to me again, Paul.
So in, in order to maintain that timeline that we talked about, the work session of the one and a half to three and a half million dollars to get it in and be allowed to spend that in 2019, you know, we're putting it in the budget. If the, if the council doesn't move forward with the project, we wouldn't spend that money. You know, obviously the, the donations would go back to the donors if the, if the project didn't move forward. We wouldn't spend the sales tax, 1.2 million dollars on the sales tax. It's only if, you know, these final steps that the, the council's looking at, you know, nailing down as far as the operations, the land, that sort of thing, the financing, the 10.7 million. If everything came into place, we would be able to move forward with 3.5 million in 2019, assuming some of that would have to come from private financing because we won't be issuing any bonds in 2019 for the community center. The only thing that, of the city that we'd be committing to would be the 1.2 million of the sales tax.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions on the improvement projects? So for the 2019 liquor store operations, we're expecting about 523,000 in net income. And the projects listed below are what we're recommending or funding with liquor store money in 2019. So we talked about the inclusive playground, that's 150,000. Margaret Street Trail Extension is 190,000 in 2019. And then it would be 365,000 next year. So it, that project would eat up the majority of our liquor store funds next year. The mini golf course, we have in at $25,000, anticipating that the balance of that would be coming from private fundraising and donations. $50,000 of the improvements that are done at the aquatic park. And the city's share for the tea hanger is $37,500. We're recommending using liquor store fun, funds for the share of that. And SMAC is $60,000 is the operating deficit that we have at that facility. We've always used liquor store money to fund, fund that facility. So that would leave adding $10,000 to our reserves at the liquor store for 2019. The last, last slide I have here is our proposed tax levy. I had mentioned that we were raising the tax levy to 2.8% for the, the public works facility. That's $125,000. The other $50,000 is to increase the amount that we're paying for street improvements each year. We had talked about it at our budget workshop earlier this year of stepping up how much we're funding our streets and doing that over a five-year period. So over the next five years, we were anticipating increasing our, our tax levy, $50,000 each year to go towards street improvements. So that's, that totals the 175,000 or the 3.9% tax levy that we're recommending for 2019. And I think that's all I've got, so I, I'll be going to answer any questions, any other questions you have on the preliminary budget?
Any questions for Paul at this time? Mike, there's something you'd like to-
No, I'll just answer questions. I think Paul did an excellent job outlining things and-
Yeah, I think, I think in our earlier projections, we were looking for not spending quite so much of the liquor store funds. We're going to put a little more in reserve, but there, what did we add? Was it the, the mini golf?
And the, the balance of that is the Margaret Street-
Oh, that, the trail extension.
And, you know, one of the things we talked to you about at the work session was we were going to try to target those funds for trails and recreational amenities. So, you know, that's, that's where those funds are going to go.
Any other questions? If not, is there please a motion to adopt resolution 2018-31, adopting the proposed tax levy for 2019 at 3.9%? Motion made by Zarlene.
I'll second it.
Second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please Patty. Cypher's?
Yes.
Hesseck?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Zarlene?
Yes.
Resolution passed. The second one would be to adopt resolution 2018-32, adopting the proposed budget for 2019.
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins.
Second.
Second by Zarlene. Is there any further discussion? This too is a roll call vote, please Patty. Hesseck?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Zarlene?
Yes.
Cypher's?
Yes.
The motion passed. Thank you. And the last item is 16.1 accounts payable. And Paul?
Yeah, we're just asking for approval to pay the bills for September. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion please to approve the September 2018 bills as presented? So moved. Motion offered by Cypher's. Second by Zarlene. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. And 17, and Troy, do you want to go first on 17?
I'd love to. I got to remember what I'm going to say because it's been a while. The one thing we want to bring up is thanks to everyone for helping out with the cleanup this past weekend. It's, was quite a mess. We did set up two alternative locations for tree drop-offs. We are planning to close those Wednesday morning. So we're asking everyone to continue, or from Wednesday going forward to use the existing tree dump site. It has been cleaned up and wood chips have been moved to make some more space for everyone to use that. So we're just asking that people go back to using the tree dump site.
They can start that now, can't they?
They can start that now if they'd like, but Wednesday morning we'll be putting barricades on those parking lots so we don't add any more to the piles that are already there.
Troy, can you kind of explain what our plan is for those trees in those locations? People might see them sitting there a little longer than-
Yeah, we're currently, we're currently contacting contractors to come in. Our plan is to chip them at the location that they're at instead of trying to pack them into trucks and haul them and then chip them at that location. So we're in contact with contractors now to get some quotes on getting that chipped onsite so we don't have to haul them again. So they, they will be sitting at those locations for some time. We'll, we'll hope we can expedite that, but with everything that's happened in the county, those contractors are going to be busy for a little bit, but that's our plan right now.
Okay. I just need to make a comment about that on behalf of the city is that the line department and the streets and park department employees just really did an outstanding job again. And I was out yesterday afternoon still at four o'clock and the electrical guys are still in their big machines and fixing stuff. And I really am very grateful and thankful. And for the people that were driving around trying to find out what was going on, if they only knew what kind of chaos they start, they, they caused by going out and seeing what was going on, they slowed the whole process down. And so I would ask that if, God forbid that this ever happens again, that people just stay home and stay out of the way of the workers because they need to get a job, they have a job to get done and they need to do it in a very timely manner. So-
And they did a great job.
Amazing. Thank you, Wayne. Thank you. Yes.
Can I back that up?
Of course you can.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, yeah, that we had, I was intimately involved because I was out of power at our business. We were for, till yesterday afternoon and city did a great job. I realize, I was frustrated, but I realized as big a project as ours was, we had a tree tear down, you know, a line which took down four poles. So it was a bigger project than getting somebody going. And, but we're glad to get it back yesterday afternoon. I was pretty impressed. I was trying to buy the city workers, at least get them something to eat, you know, because they're, somebody already had. People were out there bringing them breakfast and lunch and that kind of thing. It's always good to see. And, and when I saw the comments online, all positive support for the city and thanking them. So people were appreciative of the job they did. I just wanted to make that clear.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you Troy for your leadership. Mike?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly say I appreciate all of our employees and everything they do every day. We look at the people out in the, on, on the streets and that, but people inside city hall that answer the questions and listen to the frustration on the other end of the line, and sometimes it's a little harder to swallow than others, but they do a great job being customer friendly and always polite and professional. So thank you, city staff, for everything you do. With that, I want to, a few months back, the city council took some action to reinstate Fairmont as participating in the national flood insurance program through FEMA. We received word the other day that we are officially back in the program now. It's, it went into effect in August. I don't quite understand this, but the maps don't go into effect until October 1st. So you will be able to buy federally supported flood insurance in, in the community of Fairmont now. Check with your local insurance agent so you know what that insurance actually covers, but one hasn't been able to do that since the late 60s. So it should be a good program for those that have had some flooding issues and so contact your insurance agent.
Thank you. Council members, anything under 17?
I do. On behalf of the Region 9, we had a committee of, of individuals going for training that dealt with inclusion, and we're not done with it yet, up to Mankato throughout all these summer months. It was a grant that Region 9 had received. And because of that, there is some homework that our committee had to do. And we are hosting Celebrating Culture in Martin County, October 10th, and it'll be at the Fairmont Elementary CER room from 1:30 to 3 o'clock. Anyone is invited to come and learn about inclusion in our community. And it is, will be held at the same time as English is our second language class there. So we invite the whole community to come, whoever is interested in inclusion in our community. This is something that will, will be, you know, is necessary, will be more necessary as we become more diverse, you know, in our community in the future. So just so you know, that's coming up on October 10th. And I have some posters here if anybody would like to put them up around the community. There's one other thing too, I'd like to announce that Martin County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition is offering a little symposium about what is vaping. Vaping is becoming a real tough, tough, tough problem in most communities and Fairmont as well. And so that will be held Thursday, September 27th, and that's this coming Thursday at 7:00 PM at Fairmont High School. So if you're interested in that, invite you to come to the high school at 7 o'clock on Thursday night and learn more about vaping.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Counselor Zarlene?
I just want to echo what everybody else, or the echoes and the statements about our crew. And I genuinely want to take one more opportunity to thank you guys for the really, really hard work you've been doing in that community center. Keep getting the information and we're as close as we've ever been and hopefully we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mike, thanks for being available this weekend, also answering all our questions.
Exactly. Okay.
I got one.
Okay, go ahead.
It's personal, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'm going to do it anyway. Today's my wife's 30th wedding anniversary and I'm here, so I just wanted to congratulate her on her anniversary.
There you go. Okay, we are now going to go into closed session.
Thank you, Steve brought in some nice music.
We are going, we're going to go into closed session and we are going to go, because we are going to do our evaluation of the city attorney. And so thank you all for being-
Do you need adjournment?
I, no, we don't adjourn.
Oh, don't hold on.
Closed session, but council members, how about, about two, five minute break so that you can use the rest.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yes.
Yes.
How many?
One minute.
About 23.
Okay.
That's our, that's our rule.
Here's a list.
Working from the office.
Yep.